Mr. Khan here, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Flonis here.
First item on our work session agenda is consideration and approval of this work session agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz throughout the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan, all those in favors or any discussion? All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. First item and sole item on our work session agenda is Michelle McCain, our Director of Finanz, presenting Silver Consulado's full fiscal year budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody.
All right.
Closing? Really? Is it working? Now?
You got the sleazy on it.
At least you're going first.
And last. Good evening, everybody, welcome to my presentation of our fiscal twenty-four budget. And I want to start out by saying that the information that I'm presenting tonight, a lot of the information that goes into our funding formula comes from our STARS information. It's extremely important that the data that goes into our STAR system is accurate because the data that's integral to the funding formula includes but is not limited to the student numbers, student mobility, homelessness, teacher licensure, private school, homeschool athletes participating in our athletics or activities, Sandy level students, population, and ancillary FTEs. The revenue which I'm speaking of today, our operational budget, is referred to by the state of New Mexico as the state equalization guarantee. The S E G is calculated using the funding formula called the nine ten V five. All schools, districts, charter schools in the state of New Mexico use the tool, the nine ten V five, to calculate their operational budget revenue. We start out on our revenue with our program units. Those are our student FTE counts that are multiplied by a cost index that is set by the state in order to calculate the weighted value of each student in each grade level. They take the cost index as it applies to each grade level kindergarten, grade one, grade two, three, grade four, grade six, and grade seven through twelve, and multiply it by the T C I, which is the teacher cost index. That is their level of licensure, and they multiply that by the unit value. This year's initial unit value is a big increase, I believe the first unit value that I had was about forty-five hundred dollars. So coming into this year with our unit value of six thousand two hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents gives, helps us build the funding formula. Program units are based on the average eighty and one-twenty day student FTE counts for the prior fiscal year, which would be our school year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then they're multiplied by the cost index. This year, we had a student pop, average student population in the one-eighty, one-twenty day for kindergarten of a hundred and sixty-seven point five. That means the cost index for kindergarten students gets us two hundred and forty-one point two units that go towards our funding formula. The program units are based, again, on the average of the eighty-one-twenty day. We had a first grade average of a hundred and sixty-nine, which resulted in two hundred and two point eight units. Second and third grade average was three hundred and three FTEs, which translates to three hundred and fifty-seven point five four units. The fourth, fifth, and sixth grade average population was four hundred and ninety-seven point five, which translates to five hundred and nineteen point eight 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 units. And the seventh through twelve average population was a thousand seventy-two, which translated to one thousand three hundred and forty units. The T N E and T C I, T N E was the formula, the former factor that the state used to calculate in our funding formula for our teachers' level of experience and now level of licensure. In two thousand nineteen, that was the last year, we had a T N E, and that was at one point one two eight. You can see twenty twenty-four, the factor that we're multiplying by is the one point zero seven two, and that is based on a report that I did in November that gave them the teacher cost index on the staff of teachers or certified staff that we had at the time. The adjusted membership program units are calculated by adding the weighted membership F T E of two thousand six hundred and sixty-one point four two eight students times the teacher cost index of the one point zero seven two for a total adjusted membership of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three point oh five one. We have special education units that are factored in for our students required, requiring special services. This includes our gifted and D-level students. We report in STARS data by the different categories. We have our A P population, which was an average of three hundred and fifty-seven point five, resulting in two hundred and fifty point two five units for that group. We had C and C gifted students with an average, average membership of forty, which they give the full value of those, so we had forty units for those. Our D and D gifted students, the average numbers were twenty-six students, which resulted in fifty-two units for that calculation. And then our D-level, three and four-year-olds, our average population was twenty-nine and a half, which resulted in fifty-nine minutes for that, for a total of four hundred and one point five minutes. Point two five, pardon me. The adjusted ancillary F T E, which includes the special education staff, not inclusive of special education teachers and instructional assistants. And the adjusted average F T E for the ancillary was twenty-two point one six, and the weighted units for that is five hundred and fifty-four units for ancillary. Our elementary arts, elementary fine arts program, grades K through six for schools that have an approved fine arts application. What we see funding for this, we are one of those districts and have historically been. We have our elementary fine arts programs' average participation of a hundred and, a thousand and one hundred nineteen point five students, multiplied by the cost index, gives us sixty-one point five seven three units to factor into our funding formula. Our bilingual program, we do not have a bilingual program per se right now for silver schools, and so we have no units to count for this year. Elementary P E, funding for elementary P E was frozen for the two thousand seven, two thousand eight membership number up until last year. It was not included in my initial funding formula, but the state did come back and fund us for the actual elementary program units at the end of, when we got our final unit value. So our elementary P E program had an average of nine hundred and fifty-seven point five students for the eighty-one-twenty day, which resulted in fifty-seven point four five units towards the funding formula. District size adjustment, this is not the small school factor. This is another adjustment that is in the funding formula for any school districts under four hundred, four thousand student population. I don't know the factors for this because this is something that is input by the P E and they tell us how many units we qualify for, and this year it's a hundred and forty-eight point three six two. Rural population program units. The rural population factor was designed to string, string money to rural areas, at least partially offsetting the removal of the small school size funding, adjustment funding. We had a, an F T E of two hundred and nine students, and so with the rural population index of point four oh six and the differential that the state includes of point one five resulted in a hundred and thirty-four point five two eight units. The small school size adjustment units that I mentioned earlier were what the schools in our size group were funded with in previous years. But starting in twenty twenty, they started, they phased that part of the funding formula out and instead imputed the rural school factor, thinking that it would be comparable or the same as our small school factor. And for us, that is not the case because this year, if we were to replace our small school funding with the, where the rural factors are, we would actually get another five hundred and three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and nineteen cents. But the state decided that that, to fund that, to phase out this factor. Our at-risk index is a formula that identifies at-risk students through income, that's poverty, English proficiency, and mobility. The data that is collected from census information and other sources. That being said, census information is voluntary, so that, you know, the information used to build the at-risk factor can be, you know, it's as good as the people that report their information. And there are, you know, a factor of people that don't believe the government needs to know their information for the census. And so using that as a guideline for funding is, is a little bit iffy because of the fact that it's so subjective, whether you're going to report or not report to the census bureau. So anyway, our at-risk factor this year is four hundred and twenty-six point three three seven units. Growth units, if you're in a district where you're seeing growth, then the, in I believe October, the state sends out a request for projections for the upcoming year to ask us how many students, you know, if we think our population is going to grow and if by how much. And we do it actually by grade level to, to see if we're going to see any changes in that. I looked at the past two years of student numbers, kind of post-pandemic, and use that to estimate the numbers. When it came out at the, the end, I only had eleven additional F T E, and it wasn't enough for them to impute a growth factor into our funding formula this year. National Board Certified Teacher. Our National Board Certification was designed to develop and recognize and retain accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in school districts nationwide. The National Board Certified Teachers receive additional compensation for this certification. The state of New Mexico mandates that this funding flows through to the teacher who received the certification by October of the fiscal year. You have to receive a certification by October. As long as the certification remains valid and there is requirements of anybody holding this certification to keep it renewed, then they will get one and a half times whatever our S E G is every year. And so I know it's not an easy feat to become a National Board Certified Teacher. We've had two in the time that I've been here. Barbara McKee was one of our National Board Certified Teachers, and currently we have Laura Brown, who is a National Board Certified Teacher. And that being the case, she will receive on top of her regular contract, nine thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-one cents that goes straight to her for having this certification. And I believe there are scholarships that the state offers for the National Board Certification. Charter School Student Activities. Funding provided for charter school students participating in district activities and sports. So we had seven, an average of seven students that participated, that was reported participating in our charter and our athletics and activities, and that resulted in point seven units. Same thing goes with our homeschool students, even though they not, they are not in our districts in our classrooms, they are allowed to participate in our athletics and activities. And we had two that were reported, an average of two that were reported for an addition of point two units.
Michelle, we approve this?
Yes.
Sorry, does that cover the cost?
No. But, but, but sports are not covered in the funding formula. So based on all of those units, as I went through and was describing those to you, those units are what we look forward to, we add all of those together, and we came up with a total base of program units of four thousand six hundred and thirty-eight point nine five one. That number has been taken against the initial unit value of six thousand two forty-one point six seven for our operational budget, which is twenty-eight million nine hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and one dollars. There is a caveat this year, though, that historically, that would have been our budget number for our operational budget. But they have added, I know that there was a lot of talk around our district, and I think around the state of New Mexico and a lot of school districts, about the increased teaching hours that were required by the state of New Mexico. We have to generate calendars that showed all of our teaching time, all of our professional development time, and our early release times. And using that data, that information, they, in the calendar, set whether or not we get the required teaching hours. Well, there was another little caveat in there that they had a limit of, I think, thirty hours for elementary from, for K six, and then for secondary, they had sixty hours of allowed professional development. So if you had more than those hours reflecting in your professional development, they had us show that on a column that said, reflected participation in the K twelve plus program. Our schools had opted out of participating in the K twelve plus program, but the way the state is looking at it is they are taking any additional time that you're in the school, in performance of your job at, in professional development or in the classroom, I should say, and looked at it as an opportunity to see if those hours could count towards the K twelve plus program. We did not increase our number of workdays for either CLIF or for the in-town teachers. Their contracts in town are for seven and a half hours and the contracts out of town or in CLIF are proportionally the same, don't remember the hours, sorry. But, so we didn't increase any more time that our employees are required to be on the job, but in the computations of the professional, professional leave and stuff, we actually qualified for one additional day in the K twelve plus program based on their calendars. It was magic. I'm just going to go with that. And so this is the summary of the revenue that we have for our operational budget. The biggest and best, of course, is our S E G, the state equalization guarantee, which is at the twenty-eight million nine hundred and fifty-four thousand and eight hundred and one dollars. Our local revenue, which is our copper and local property taxes that used to be in our operational budget, the P E has determined, they want to see how we use those monies separately. So they created a new, new fund called local revenue, not part of my operational budget, so it's not really in this conversation. But, but those monies used to be part of the operational budget, and they just want to, I think they, they want a better idea of how schools are using the funds, and so they're breaking down the funding formula to, for us to be able to explain how we're using it as we earn those units. I'm required to meet M O E with some of our federal programs to say, we must be doing as much with our operational dollars or more before we get federal assistance, before we get Title I and before we get I D of E. And so that's what the government is looking for. Our forest reserve, we have not received that number, I hope to get it before we have to send it. Indirect cost is the funds that are based, it's the revenue administrative costs that are collected from the federal funds as an administration fee for maintaining those funds. So we get two point, this year, our rate is two point seven percent. That rate is determined by the state of New Mexico with help from the federal government and looking at how you use the funds. But this year, our rate is two point seven percent. So for every one of our Title I dollars and, and our I D of E dollars that we spend, and art dollars, because that's big this year, they're all federal funds. And so any one of those that we, all of those dollars that we use spending expenditures, we take two point seven percent and put it into the operational budget as an administrative fee. We continue to receive our lease from Verizon and for the fifteen thousand dollar lease for our cell phone tower. And then historically, the state of New Mexico would let us put a portion of our operational cash into our initial budget, and then they would wait till the end of the year or after our audit, and then we could put, put the final portion. Well, that, starting last year and coming along this year, we actually have to estimate as close as we possibly can what our projected cash is because they want us to use the entire cash amount into our initial budget, which looks good on the uptake, but there, there's no saving grace at the end of the year when we need to get that final cash injection. So with our estimated cash carryover and all of our operational revenue sources, we have a budget of thirty-one million five hundred thirteen thousand four hundred and seven dollars. And then in order to offset the revenue, we have our expenditures. And of course, the biggest one by far is our salaries and benefits. We have our base contract salaries, which are at seventeen million four hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars. We have budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand in substitutes, and I have to say, we're at about four hundred thousand this year for subs, and so I don't doubt that we will hit that mark next year. And then our benefits, based on those contracts and all of that payroll, are seven million five hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. We have additional compensation increments, that's all of our sponsorships, all of our coaching increments, come up to a total of five hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars for total salary and benefits from budgeted for the upcoming school year of twenty-five million nine hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Also in our expenditures for the upcoming year are, are electricity. I projected a little bit of an increase in that because we did see it go down when we switched to the L E D lighting. But now we have a display in every classroom, so I think that might offset some of that saving. And so I projected a little bit of an increase for that. Natural gas, gas and propane have remained pretty much constant, we haven't had any really harsh winters. So those numbers are pretty close to what they were last year. Water and sewage being the same thing. Communications and internet, we have budgeted three hundred and thirty-five thousand for the upcoming school year. Other expenses that, this list seems so short because when I look at all of our expenditure lines that I have to fill in, in a budget, there's about thirty-eight hundred of them. So when I'm going through this list, I'm like, that's it, okay. Our insurance and that's our property, general liability, workers' comp, vehicles and buses. Last year, we paid nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, this year, there was a five point I believe, so we are now at a million, one hundred, one thousand dollars, one million, one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That bill is due in July. That is, I always point out, that's why it's important for us to have a cash balance because we have a bill, you know, we still have salaries and, and benefits to pay, and then we have a million-dollar bill that's due the first month of the school year. We have student travel, you'll see an increase in that from last year. I would say it's probably a ten percent increase.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I hit the wheel.
And that is because this year, when we spoke to coaches and sponsors and stuff, we were looking at what kind of kids are leaving in the morning and decided that, you know, there's a lot of times that kids just don't have a chance for a good breakfast before they get on the road, and a lot of times, we're putting them on the road to go do something either physical or, you know, something that they have to be able to think and have a clear mind again. Sometimes when you're hungry, you can't have that. And so we've increased the spending for meals for students so that we can accommodate those breakfasts and additional lunches that might have been necessary to make sure that they have what they need to travel. Our professional development, I did the budget a whole lot in that. There's a few positions that some of the grants don't cover, you know, like when Cindy travels, when Mr. Alvarez travels, when Mr. Hawkins travels, those can't be charged to a grant. Those are administrative costs, so that has to come out of the operational budget. And so I haven't leave so many in the operational budget for professional development for our administrators. But the majority of our professional development is budgeted in Title II. There's still, there's also some entitled, one, there's some in our Medicaid grant to cover the nurses and stuff. So we have plenty of money budgeted in professional development, just not in our operational budget. Contracted related services, our ancillary services for our non-employees, that's whenever we cannot hire an S L P, when we can't hire an O T, and we have to contract out with either a local vendor or somebody in a tele service, then we use those funds to meet the needs of our students that have that need. And then supplies and materials, we have, I budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Those supplies are basic supplies, we, I budgeted two hundred dollars per teacher for supplies. And then we have student athletic supplies that we need. And so there's always, you know, more athletic pick, more basketballs, more, you know, items like that that we have to have, you know, for each new year, and so that's budgeted in our supplies and materials. N B I and art, N B I and art supplies, those are budgeted because of the approved fine arts elementary grant. We have about eight thousand dollars for N B I, and then we put additional money into art supplies because Cindy has a project coming up this next year that we're going to have a K twelve program for our drama students. And so we will be needing more supplies. Board travel training and election expenses, my budgeted forty thousand dollars. We're going to have an election this year, so we're going to have to fund that. And then our board is required to take, have so much training in a year, and so we have to make sure that they have funds available to attend those trainings. Dual credit in textbooks, dual credit instructional materials in textbooks. Okay, that's what this covers. And the number is given to us by the state of New Mexico. They tell us what we have to budget. It used to be a separate fund that they would budget for instructional materials, high-quality instructional materials, not just any instructional materials, but high-quality instructional materials. And the state has given us the number, four hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for dual credit textbooks, and those can be digital, and also our instruction, high-quality instructional materials textbooks. This is the, the amount that I budgeted in our operational budget. I, I budgeted an additional three hundred and twenty thousand in the local revenue account that I told you about that our property tax comes into because we have an adoption year. And while, you know, almost a half a million dollars sounds like a lot of money, not when it comes to textbooks. I mean, we will spend that seven hundred thousand very easily to, to get the books that we need for our students. We are required by the state of New Mexico to have an independent auditor audit our books every year, and so we budgeted the thirty thousand dollars to pay our auditor for the audit. And we have our legal expense. We have thirty thousand dollars, we, I budgeted that this year. We are not really close, we're not going to go over, I don't expect, but we will maybe come close to the thirty thousand. And this is an awesome number because historically, in the last few years, we were brushing up on the two hundred thousand dollar mark, and that was a little bit of, of a struggle to maintain. And so I appreciate the fact that our legal expenses have gone down considerably. Other fees and expenses, there's, you know, registration fees, there are background checks, there's a multitude of other little lines that we have to cover, you know, we rent porta-potties, we do all kinds of things. And so ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars is budgeted in the miscellaneous other expenses. This will give us an estimated cash carryover of about a million six going into the new year. The things that we have to be aware of for this budget, that we are required to have in this budget, is the state has mandated a six percent salary increase for all educational employees. Not an average of, which is usually their disclaimer on the budget raises. They say, if you do an average of across the board, then you're good. This year, it is mandated that every employee who worked for us last year or this year in this school year gets a six percent raise. Now, we have the teacher minimums, which, level one teacher gets a minimum salary of fifty thousand, level two teacher sixty thousand, and level three teacher seventy thousand. So if you come to us from Western and you don't have any experience with us, we don't owe you a six percent raise, but we do owe you one of those minimums wherever you land in the level of licensure. And so then also mandated in this legislation was the minimum salaries for certified instructional assistants is twenty-five thousand. Historically, in statute, until they changed it, it was twelve thousand. It didn't even beat the minimum wage at that point. And although the minimum wage for all of their entities in the state of New Mexico is twelve dollars an hour, And although the minimum wage for all other entities in the state of New Mexico is twelve dollars an hour, no school budget will be approved without a minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour for employees. We have our work-study students that are not legally employed. I don't know how to phrase that correctly. We value them, and we know that they do a lot of hard work, but they get the twelve dollars per hour. Everybody else in the district, every sub, every cafeteria worker, everybody else gets a minimum of fifteen dollars per hour. And it's important to notice, note, that the salary increases apply to all school personnel, including federal-funded positions. We use a lot of our federal monies for our IE salaries. We pay all of our library aides out of the Title I budget. We pay all of our one-to-one aides out of our IDOF budget. Those monies did not go up because we have a twenty-five thousand dollar minimum. So what will end up happening is I have to shift salaries that were formerly paid out of those grants into our operational budget so that we can then afford those people in the grants and look at how we use those grants. Because we can't just use the grants for salaries only. We have to use them for other needs that are required for the IDOF grant and for the Title I grant. There are responsibility factors that have to be met for school site administrators. They start with the base level-three teacher's salary and apply the responsibility factor to that. And so those, the elementary minimum is eighty-seven thousand five hundred. The middle school is one hundred one thousand five hundred. And a high school principal has to make a minimum of one hundred fifty thousand five hundred. Assistant principals, the elementary assistant principal makes eighty thousand five hundred. The middle school assistant principal would make eighty-four thousand. And a high school assistant principal would have to make a minimum of ninety-nine thousand. All of our administrators made more than those salaries before, well, after the six percent increase. And so there was not an issue of having to adjust our salary schedules based on the responsibility factor. Five-point-two-nine-four-seven, that's what our risk insurance went up this year. Then we also saw an increase, or will see an increase, in our medical premiums that will go up seven-point-two-four percent. And I think over the years, I've explained it to people, and I think people still hear, you know, the employees feel like they're the only ones that are carrying that. But the state looks at our entire premium and they apply that seven-point-two-four percent. So employer pays seven percent more, and employee usually pays seven percent more. The one thing that the state did that they hadn't done in the twenty-five years that I've been working here is they adjusted the tiers, the premium tiers for our staff so that it would be more reflective of the salaries that we see in public education right now. And so we had, the old tier, the first tier was the employee paid twenty-five percent and the school paid seventy-five percent, but only if somebody made under fifteen thousand dollars. So very few people saw benefit of that tier. And so now with the new tiers, the employees' sal, with salaries less than fifty thousand dollars will have their premium split eighty-twenty. Employees fifty thousand to fifty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents will see a split of seventy-thirty. And then on the chart that was published by the state, they said employees making over sixty thousand, which would be all of our level teacher, level-three teachers, a lot of our level-two teachers, and all of our administrators would be on the same tier as they had historically been on, the sixty-forty percent. And so in looking at our budget and looking at ways to try to make things more beneficial to our employees, I worked with Mr. Hawkins, and we came up with an affordable option for this year that instead, we would go to the, anybody making over sixty thousand would see a sixty-five-thirty-five split. And I went through and calculated, and I'm hoping that it holds true for everybody. But even with the seven percent increase in premiums, I don't believe anybody in our district will see an increased cost to their insurance that's more than they paid last year. Okay? And so we'll continue to look at those and see, you know, how we can afford to do more for our staff. Because even though it may not be more money in their paycheck, it's less money coming out, and either way, that's a help. And so we would, we want to be able to do that for our staff. So our first and greatest concern for all of our staff and students is their physical and emotional wellbeing. Thus, the conversations about security guards and social-emotional training, a six-million-dollar grant that Cindy was able to get for us. It's a mental health grant that will look at the social, emotional needs of our students, those with and without IEPs. Our enrollment numbers across the nation dropped significantly during the COVID pandemic. And they are slow, slow to return to pre-pandemic levels. Rural population units are replacing small school funding at a reduced rate. This year, it cost us a half a million dollars. Each time they tweak that funding formula, they, we have a conversation, and it sounds just almost insignificant in passing. But when you apply it to the formula and you see the results, that's when the panic happens. And, you know, last year, I informed Mr. Hawkins that this was happening, and we started having many conversations with our legislators and with the Legislative Finance Committee to see, you know, did they understand the actual impact? You know, this year, we're hearing changes to the transportation formula. We don't know what the fallout will be until we see what the, you know, the change in the formula is. Inflation is rising at record speed, increasing the cost of fuel, food, supplies, and equipment. And we're doing everything to stay ahead of it and to make sure that we provide opportunity as far as students and our staff. Our last budget committee meeting, I got to visit with some of the parents and staff that showed up for the meeting. And we, you know, I asked them the question of what's important to you? What would you like to see change with Silver Schools? What would you, you feel needs our attention? And overall, from everybody, it was music and band in the schools. Can we bring back music in the elementaries? I know historically, we've had a music teacher that would go from school to school, you know, and do some teaching that way. You know, that's something that we may have to look at, you know, a floating music teacher. Band and music for students that click. I believe when I first started working here, twenty-five years ago, we had a music program out there. It has slowly faded away, and so it's something that we need to look at. Band and music upgrades for Silver High in La Plata. I had one of the parents that was there in the meeting, and her son is using the instrument that she used in middle school. So yeah, it's time for some new instruments. Scholarships for students who can't afford to rent one. Because if we do not have an instrument that the child wants to play, then they go to, I believe it's White's Music Box, or, you know, we even somebody local here, and rent an instrument from them. And it shouldn't be their responsibility to provide their tool for them, you know, if they want to participate then. We don't ask any kids to bring their own basketball. We don't ask anybody to bring their own football and, you know, soccer goals with you. And so we should be able to provide these for the students that are in these programs. In fact, as I came out of my meeting, it stimulated a conversation that I had with Cindy. And we were talking about, you know, additional ways, you know, to come up with the funding for these things. And she actually is writing her Title IV budget. And she was able to, you know, she's going to write in there replacement of instruments at fifteen thousand a year so that they can then replace, it won't be a brand-new band the first time we see them go out. But over time, we'll see those obsolete and broken instruments be replaced by new and better instruments. So that is my budget for the FY24 year. If you have any questions or concerns.
Any questions from the panel?
I just want to say fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
You have come a long ways, and it seems like you're a natural up there.
Sweating boards.
Just to let you know, that was forty-two minutes, but you did awesome.
Wow.
Very, very awesome. Thanks for all the information. Which is wonderful for us all to hear, kind of where we're at, as that is our responsibility to ensure that, you know, the budget of the schools is being managed well. And I feel like it is. Hard, hard work, countless hours working on this.
Anything else you'd support?
Thank you.
All right, that wraps up our work session agenda. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Will you please do a roll call?
This is Montenegro.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
And Mr. Flores.
Yes.
We are adjourned. It is five forty-three PM. We will start our regularly scheduled board meeting right at six o'clock. The speed to order. It is six oh five. Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is a regularly scheduled school board meeting for the Silver Consolidated School Board of Education. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members, members of the community, staff, students, parents. Who did I miss? Thank you for joining us. I'm really glad that Mr. Hawkins thought well in advance to bring us up here because this would not be quite as comfortable in the boardroom. So Patrick is in absent. He needed to attend to a family activity. And so I'm going to ask Lisa to please do a roll call.
Ms. Montenegro, here. Dr. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Khan. Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Thank you. Will you please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge the flag of the state of Mexico, the state of the soul, the perfect nation of all humanity.
All right. Numbers to honor agenda is with you and approval minutes in your board packet. You welcome received minutes for the April seventeenth work session and regularly scheduled board meeting as well as the finance committee for April fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Flores. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number three, consideration approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. McMillan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number four, information and presentation. These are the non-action items for our agenda. The first presenter that we have with us tonight is Kiwanis student of the month for April and May. And the presenter is Jody Pfeifer. Welcome.
Yes. You gotta hold it like you're singing.
Singing's not happening. All right. Kiwanis for student of the month. We try to honor those students who are... The schools actually select the students. And so the teachers pick them out. They rotate around. But anyway, we have five outstanding students. Since we were out at Cliff last month, we presented Cliffs to them. And this month, we're doing both two for April and May for LaPlata and Silver High. I'd like to... Do you want me to get my favorite words? Sorry, it's been a tough day, so I'm not as organized as I normally am. May I have Cliff, student, Jaden Clifton. Jaden is an active senior at Cliff School. He's a well-known athlete, participating in basketball and track in school, as well as baseball in the local league. He continues to mentor younger athletes and is a great role model for the younger student body. One teacher spoke fondly of Jaden, sharing that he is always kind, has a smile on his face, and he's always willing to help others. Jaden pride prioritizes his academics as well. He is an honor roll student with a high school cumulative grade point of three point seven three two. Jaden will be greatly missed on campus next year as he will continue his education at Western New Mexico University of LeFol. Cliff School is proud to recognize Jaden Clifton as the May student of the month. Thank you. And let's give a picture. Silver High School. Do we have Ian Vega here? Ian Vega here, going down. Ian's in the lowst grade. And Michaela Martinez, senior. Michaela, is her certificate? Now, if you guys will just stand up here and I'll read how wonderful they are. Michaela Martinez is twelfth grader. Ms. Martinez is a very active student. She has participated in soccer, National History Day, track, Knowledge Bowl, and she is an SHS tutor. Not only does she have outstanding participation, but she has excellent grades. Michaela has maintained a perfect GPA throughout her high school career. This includes her dual-credit classes. Additionally, Michaela will also be graduating with her associate's degree... Excuse me. Michaela graduated with her associate's degree from Western New Mexico University prior to graduating from Silver High School. Ms. Martinez has had an outstanding career in Silver High and cannot wait to see what she does in the future as she desires to be a physician. And Ian Vega is the definition of a successful student. He's in eleventh grade. He shows respect and kindness to others and is always willing to help. He demonstrates responsibility and determination by maintaining excellent grades, having good attendance, and maintaining a part-time job. Ian is resilient, and despite obstacles that have come his way, he continues to work hard and has a positive attitude. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right.
No, you're good. You're a professional. I can just play one on TV. Feel free to come on down.
Thank you, sir.
More than welcome. They're all the time, sir.
La Plata students. Do I have Jayden Correo?
He's not here.
And do I have Oso Saki?
There he is.
Oso is the La Plata Student of the Month for April. He is... Let me get back here. The seventh-grade teachers have chosen Oso Sunny Saki for the Student of the Month. Oso gets excellent grades by working hard in class and using tools to help him navigate assignments and complete assignments. Oso does great work and is a great student. We enjoy having Oso as part of La Plata Middle School. Congratulations. Even though she's not here, let me tell you about Jayden Correo. She was nominated for the month of May. She is a good student who works hard and participates in class discussions with thoughtful answers. I'm sorry, he... He has some really great ideas that spark conversation. Jayden works hard and is self-motivated. He is friendly and courteous. Keep up the good wishes and good work and best wishes in high school. We know you will continue to be successful.
Great smile. Are you practicing that?
Oh.
A round of applause for all of our Kiwanis recognition.
All right. Thank you, Kiwanis, for recognizing our students. Next item on our agenda is our superintendent, Mr. William Hawkins. Joining him is Mr. Neil McDonald, Rotary President, and the Teacher of the Year recognition. Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Neil McDonald. I'm the current president of Rotary International here in the Silver City chapter. Just to give you a little idea about Rotary here at International, we're the largest international service organization. And we do projects internationally, regionally, and here locally. And it's been my privilege and my honor to serve the Silver City community as president for the years of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. A few months ago, Mr. Hawkins approached me with a fundraising idea. We're always looking for opportunities to raise some funds and help our local community. Currently, we're working with the nurses in all of the school districts, both Cobre and Silver City, to provide hygiene kits for the nurses, and that's been a fun opportunity. We donate our time at the commons to help feed the board and the needy. Regionally, we are in Guadiz, helping some of the refugee centers with some of those folks that are looking for a better life. And internationally, we are involved in Guatemala, helping with water projects down there and helping furnish schools. So this time, it's really fun because we get to recognize the Teacher of the Year. And I'll have you know that just a week and a half ago, we had some very elderly folks washing cars and washing dogs. And it was a lot of work, it was a lot of fun. And we were able to come up with some few funds to recognize our Teacher of the Year. So just by show of hands, don't yell it out. Do you know who the Teacher of the Year is? Okay, I see a nod, I see a hand. So good job, Mr. Hawkins. Kept it somewhat discreet. I'd like to invite Kechi Wachuku. Mr. Hawkins, if you'll come by my side, these are fellow Rotarians. We meet weekly, and we discuss the affairs of what we're doing and how we can do it better. And so we appreciate my fellow Rotarians being with me. Okay. Do we have some band kids here? Raise your hand if you're in band. All right, band kids, I need a drum roll. There we go. A little bit louder. All right, that's good. Thank you very much. You did awesome. You did awesome. Okay. Mrs. Rosemary Peru, would you please join us? I shook it up, cut it down. We're not going to make you speak, I promise. Well, I'm not. Somebody else might. Okay. So Mrs. Peru has been selected by her peers as the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Teacher of the Year for the Sixth Street Elementary and for the entire district for the two thousand to... Two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three year. A wonderful teacher who has gone above and beyond for many years. Her students were and are so blessed. Always available to her students, kind and generous, with her class, school, and community, patient and understanding with families in need. Mrs. Peru is one of eight teachers in our district under consideration to be named as Silver Schools District Teacher of the Year. Thank you, Mrs. Peru, for representing Sixth Street for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And thank you for representing Silver City. We appreciate that. I would like to award you with... Drum roll again, kids. Okay, that's good. This is a... Hang on. This is a certificate for your hard work. It's a pittance for what you've done. But I'm sure you can find home for fifteen hundred dollars.
We got the kindergarten voice. So what's funny is she probably... She had no idea she was getting this award, or she would have been dressed extremely professional. And it is probably nerve-wracking for her right now because she's in an evening t-shirt, which is... And her open-toed shoes. And her husband is in his work clothes. But we did a good job of keeping it under wraps. So she thought she was giving a data presentation. And I was giving the presentation, but talking about her data. And she only needed to speak for one minute. So she said, "Sure, no problem." Like, "Oh, that was easy." Let Mr. Alvarez know, "Oh, piece of cake." And then three days later, "I'm not talking." And I was like, "What? It's not a big deal. You just represent all the green on your screen for your data." Not talking. So then I was like, "Uh-oh. Now what are we going to do?" So then she's like, "Well, I'll still come." "Okay, sweet. Well, I'll do all the talking. I'll get a different teacher's data." And then when you're here at six o'clock and she's not here yet, Mrs. Nanius goes, makes a drive over there. And she had no idea that she... I don't even know if she was coming to her own party. You didn't know.
I was coming in. Mrs. Nanius was leaving. I met up with Mr. Wa... Hawkins. His wife said, "Pampan, I went to Da...
You were a duller... So it's a good thing I called her because I was getting a little panicked. But off the professional dress, it's not just about her dress that she always takes pride in. She takes pride in her kids in all facets. And I was hoping he was going to mention it, but she has forty-six years. Forty-six. Our evaluation that we sat through the other day took about an hour and forty-five minutes, I think. But we had some really good conversations, and I had mentioned to her, can I share as a confidential? No, I just told her that it's unheard of, and I don't know that it'll ever be done again when you think about it. In our day and age and forty-six years, and what she brings every day... I guess I stay up here all day, so I'm about to be done. But what she brings on a day-to-day basis, you would never know. You would think she was in her prime. But we're greatly going to miss her, and we thank you for all your hard work for forty-six years to this school district.
Yes, would you please come down? We'd like to recognize you as well. She says she's not sharing, by the way.
He was building a shed.
Oh. It's a... That's the money for the she shed. Can get some form up here.
Well, it's hard actually.
Sorry. Okay, smile if you blinked. Now he's too tall.
And I'd just like to say that I have the most blessed journey that anybody can have. Last year, my daughter said, "Mom, do you know that there's very few people that can say that they love their job as much as you do?" And so...
Thank you, Mom. Thank you, Mom.
All right.
Thank you to Rotary for partnering with us in recognizing our Teacher of the Year, and have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Ms. Dana Jones. No, no, no. Stop. Recognition of Mr. Clody Thompson. He has been nominated for NHT, which is National History Day Teacher of the Year. And Mr. Hawkins with that presentation.
I know he's here. Mr. Thompson? Mr. Thompson? I will say that Mr. Thompson is probably as shy as I am, so I won't keep him up there. I promise. So first and foremost, I have been here for a couple of years. And one thing I will tell you is whenever someone speaks of the National History Day program here at Silver, they really speak of the excellence and the standard it sets around the state. And they don't speak about this program without speaking about the work that you and Mr. Wilson have vested into these students. So first and foremost, you have a reputation statewide for the excellence, the hard work that these students put into it. They don't speak about this program without speaking about the two of you. So thank you for that. I'll read this quickly, then I'll move on. April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, College Park, Maryland, teachers from forty-seven National History Day affiliate programs have been nominated for the Patricia Behring Teacher of the Year Award. This award is sponsored by Patricia Behring in recognition of the pivotal role teachers play in the lives of our students. Each National History Day affiliate may nominate one, one high school and one middle school teacher for this award for each state. Okay, so it's just one for each state. Every nominee for the ten thousand dollar award is a teacher who demonstrates a commitment to engaging students in historical learning through the innovative use of primary sources, implementation of active learning strategies to foster historical thinking skills, and participation in the National History Day contest. All nominees will receive five hundred dollars. This award recognizes the very best educators across the nation and beyond. These educators are leaders and innovators in the teaching of history. They engage their students with hands-on, inquiry-based learning with primary sources. And this is from the Executive Director, Dr. Kathy Gorin. She congratulates you on your well-deserved nomination.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I appreciate that you're committing another fifteen years to the district. Thank you, sir. A round of applause.
Next on our agenda is Ms. Dana Jones with the recognition of La Plata Middle School National History Day Students' State Results.
All of you, students.
What a surprise. These students, oh my gosh, they work so hard. There's a mixture of seventh and eighth graders here. I had a total of almost thirty kids that started the program this year at the middle school. And eleven of them made it to Nationals, and this is the most the middle school has ever taken to Nationals. So give them a round of applause.
So can you tell us about the qualifications for those, for some of the eleven who are going to be going to Nationals as far as the tax projects?
We compete in two competitions. The first one is regionals and last cruises, and they have to get first, second, or third in their category in order to advance to state. At the state level, they have to get first or second. So they're competing against kids from all over the state, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And these guys got either first or second in their category. And so now they get to go to Nationals, and they will be competing against roughly about a hundred projects in each category.
Okay. Are you guys standing next to your partners?
Yeah.
The lows, no.
Okay. All right. They can work with a group, or they can work individual. Uh, let's see, the two on the end, Kate Gomez and Emiliano Diaz, they worked on a group doc, documentary about, uh, the landing on the moon. The first, uh, the space race, and then America being the first ones to win, to make it to the moon. Uh, Emma, Emma Drennan, and her partner is not here, but they did a, a group performance on Louis Pasteur and the pasturation, pasteurization of milk. Uh, Ruth Perkins, she did a individual performance. Uh, and hers is on the Pony Express. You guys are putting me on the spot. Johnny Beck and Bennett Trager, they did a group website on the Manhattan Project. Chidima Wachuku did a, an individual exhibit on Madame C.J. Walker, who was the very first, um, African-American, African-American woman millionaire in nineteen oh four, right around the turn of the century. Um, Aubrey Mario wrote a paper about, um, Caesar Lombroso, who was the, a pioneer in, in, uh, criminy, criminology, anthro, anthropological criminology. Um, he was an Italian guy from the eighteen hundreds. And Keone and his partner, right, Keone Martin and his partner Riley Torres did a, uh, a group exhibit on the Wright Brothers.
Way to go, Ms. Jones. Kilted. All right, if you guys will bunch in, I don't know if you want to take a picture or not. There's a podium to the left. Okay, look at me. Look like you're happy to be here. All right, I'll look at all those smiles on the count of six. One, two, five, six, enough. Great job, ladies and gents.
Next up will be our High School National History Day. Uh, presenting would be Mr. Thompson and Mr. Wilson. And if all of the High School National Hall of Fiers would join us up here in the front.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, we want to thank first, uh, Mr. Hopkins for, for doing this, and the board, other administrators. It, it's always nice for the kids to be acknowledged. Uh, they're deserving of it. Before I do though, I want to say, I want to give a little bit of a shout out to, um, some others, because sometimes they're forgotten in a sense, but, and we share, we share a lot of, uh, high school, a lot of athletes and students. So I did, we have some that are in esports. I want to say they won state, right, recently. I know they're gonna be acknowledged here in a while, but Ms. Radoondos' class, because I have a lot of those kids, they're amazing kids, they're going to Nationals too. So good job, Coach, wanted to say that as well. We do share, we do share a lot. So this is, I'll go quick. This is, uh, our largest group. We have nineteen, usually we average between like thirteen to sixteen that go to Nationals, but we had nineteen this year, so it, it's quite an honor. And, um, it's really, the credit goes to all of them. They're amazing. We just, we guide them. They do all the work. Um, but I, I also want to say that we're not done yet. Uh, yeah, we, we, actually, everything has to be uploaded tomorrow. There are paperwork and everything, so, um, they know parents, sorry, but they're gonna be up all night tonight with some last-minute stuff. And we'll be working all day tomorrow to get the, all that in. Um, and when I say we're not done, Mr. Hopkins did a good job saying, you know, the kids and what we do at state, and, and we do, the kids do really, really well. But we also are proud that we do well at Nationals. We're going against the best in the nation. And, um, we've been fortunate for the last seven years, seven years in a row that we've had a project or more finish top ten in the country. So, yeah, so, and that's, that is not easy to do. Sometimes we think of all our state competitors, and it's like, we want state, like, like our, I didn't mention them, right? Our girl softball. Do we have any girl, no, but we need to give them a shout out, right? Girl softball. I have a lot of them in class, I'm congratulating them today. But, um, sometimes it stops at the state level, but for us, it doesn't. And now you're going against the best of the best from Oklahoma, Texas, can, you name it. And for seven years in a row, we, we've done that. So we're hoping it's eight. It's very, very difficult to do, very difficult to get into the top ten. But hopefully, we have one here that, um, that does that. Um, I'll let Coach say a couple of things, and then we'll, we'll introduce them and get out of your way.
Yeah, I mean, with that, I mean, it, it humbles us. Um, it's easier to be successful when you have talent, you're looking at it. Um, this is a cross-sport, this is an amazing group, they always are. Uh, we look forward to Dana's kids coming up. Um, we don't know how much longer we're gonna be doing this, but, you know, we, we.
Sorry.
Fifteen more years. But we're privileged, we're best of the best, and, and, and they truly are. And they're the reason, you know, we keep coming back, you know, year after year. And, um, so we're blessed.
All right, so really quick here, we have, and I will just say, the, the main person that they, they did their project on. So we had a group performance, uh, Lane Porter, Colton Trager, Casey Rogers did it. You guys come up front just briefly. And Olivia DeHavillan, those three?
Crowd's out, we guys.
We had Sofia Beta, um, Sofia Marie, uh, Lira Diaz, Isabel, Isabel Curtis, David Gorman. They did theirs on, yeah, Susan, Susan McGoffin, they did a, a group performance as well. So we, at state, we actually swept the group performance. We finished first and second, which is, is not easy to do. Individual website, we have.
Swept.
Yeah, that's right, we also swept individual website. We have Gracie Montoya, so forward, Gracie. She did hers on Blackdom, New Mexico. Um, we have Lauren Brugman, who did hers on Edward Abbey. So we swept website as well, individual website. Uh, group website, we have Anson Beck, Michaela Martinez, Ryan Chadwick. They did theirs on other watch process. Uh, individual documentary, we have Josh Beck. He did his, uh, animation in Snow White. We have group documentary, uh, Lizzie McDonald, Kylie Jones, and Isaac Beck. We did theirs on Vicky Chappelle. We actually swept, um, individual exhibits too at state. So, yeah, so we have Caitlin Rogers, who did hers on Jacques Cousteau. And we have Izzy Smith, who did hers on the heliocentric theory. And then one last one, we had, um, an individual paper, uh, Brianna Clark, who did hers on Adalina Odeta-Warren. Again, thank you for, for the, we get a lot, and I know Ms. Jones does too. We get a lot of support from the community. We're still, both programs are still looking for support. We're still not where we need to be with, with monetary, you know, help. So please, um, I think the other day, we just, for this group, we put down thirteen thousand just for flights. So, yeah, so there, there's a lot going into it. So any help that anybody can give, we, we greatly appreciate it. So I was asked, I was asked to ask something, so I'll do that. Um, and, uh, so we would like, we would like as a program to ask the school board if there is any possible way that they could help us out with, uh, monetary help. All right, we would greatly appreciate it. Same with middle school. You know, I spoke down your hat. We want, and I think, right, Ms. Jones, this may be the largest group we've had together collectively, I think, between both of us, right?
Yes.
I believe.
And I think also, I don't know if you want to mention.
Charter plane, yeah.
But Grant Count, so us together have thirty students, but Cobry has five?
Yeah, five.
So Grant County has thirty-five students, which is about half of the students that go to Nationals from New Mexico, roughly. So I think that's pretty good.
Everybody look at my general direction. All right, back, here we go, on the count of three. One, two, two and a half. This is like, wow, it's like a repetition, just keep going and going. Parents, I don't know how you're gonna get this picture, you may have to come to an angle thing, I don't know. There's a lot of them. Panoramic. Thank you, students, well done, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is Mr. Pacquiao Ali Loco with the S.H.S. Gill USA, as well as an Innovation Zone grant trip presentation. Welcome.
Okay, so what I have here right now is Skills USA. I, we've been doing this for about twenty years. I have taken someone to Nationals probably every, every year. Uh, I've taken anywhere from thirteen to one. So this year, I will take two. I also like to say that this would be the first year I take a female in collision repair. All right, so that would be. Uh, I've also, I brought the other two, there, I got three seniors right now. I had four seniors, one couldn't come. Navea Oroz is a senior. Louis Escamilla is a senior, and Cameron Ogilvy is a senior. Um, I've had Navea for two years. And so I'd like to say something really neat about Navea. She scored higher than the college level did in the competition. So when we go to competition, we go against everybody from the state of New Mexico that wants to participate. It doesn't matter if you're two A, four A, five A, doesn't matter if you have a thousand dollars or a hundred thousand. And, um, she, she was, uh, I was told that they had to grade her test twice in one of the events. She, there was twenty points, and she earned seventeen. And that was higher than what the college kids got. So they went and they graded three times, and they asked me, do you realize that? And I said, of course, I do understand. And, and, um, Cameron Ogilvy got, he scored a second in Hobbs, and then we came down to state, and we, he scored third. Now I want to make sure I understand, I want to make something clear here. I'm very happy with third. Uh, first place is actually a, uh, first place went to Career and Richmond Center, which is a school that is like a, mm, help me out here.
It's a magnet school.
It's, it's a magnet school, and all they do is just a career base. So they go three class periods to normal school, and they go the rest of the day to, to Career and Richmond Center. And, and we always have a joke, because it's either he, he, I'll see him, he'll say hi, and he'll look at me, and he goes, where are you gonna go? First, second, or third? And I always smirk here and laugh, and I said, I don't know, we'll see what happens. And so this year, it was, it was, he got first, and I got third. And I'm very proud of my young man that did that. Uh, the reason I have, the other young man, the young, he often, he is a sophomore, a junior, excuse me, and he took second. And he also scored really high in the collision repair. And so the, the last person I have is, uh, Louis. The reason I bought, I brought Louis up is because he is actually my first year, one of my first-year kids as a senior. He's a transfer from Florida, from Maine, okay? And it was, it was really interesting, because I've always done this. I've taken kids from other states or other schools. And midway through the year, I'm like, oh, this was not a good idea. And I would have to say this is probably the best idea I've ever had with them, okay? They all work hard. Navea and, uh, Derek will have the opportunity to go to Nationals, which is gonna be in Atlanta, Georgia. And they both will compete against forty-nine other states. And that's, that's where we're at. I also sent a letter out to the board, I don't know if you guys got to read it or not. I was asking you for some money as well. Uh, I'll, I'll say money. Mr. Mr. Thompson and Coach over there used really nice words, but I like to get to the point, okay? So, so I, I just wanted to, I wanted everybody to see what was going on. I wanted the board to understand how it was. Uh, if there's any questions, I'm okay with answering. If not, thank you for your time. Community, thank you for coming, and I appreciate everything you do for our school. Thank you. You know I have to take a picture, I don't even know why you guys are surprised. Okay, one more. Okay, I like to get everybody's shoes and head in the same picture. I know, it's weird, I just can't help it. You guys should go, and the board should. Our, our Silver High Auto Shop program. Okay, so who am I handing the mic to? It's all you.
Okay. Um, good evening, board members and cabinet. Um, my name is Ryan Chadwick, and I am part of CTE program. Um, I am a junior, and I participate in band, um, NHD, NHI, Student Council, a bunch of other stuff. Um, I have even started a YouTube channel here for the school called Silver Studios, and I run my own podcast. And we are working on building that up and bringing the media up more and getting to higher places.
Hello, my name is Lazias. Also very interested in the CTE program. He looked me into it, I didn't know anything about it. Just, uh, I play for the football team, that's really it about me.
My name is Avon Hages. Um, I'm also very interested, interested in the program we have. Uh, I play football, and I really like what we're going on, how it's going on here at Silver.
My name is Luke Millen, I'm a sophomore here and I'm also very interested in the CTE program we have here at Silver. And I participate in basketball and I'm also an intern at the IT section of Silver Schools.
Okay, so we got the opportunity to go to Denver to check out some schools and the programs that they have built there. I'm gonna let these two give us kind of the rundown of what, what we kind of did and from the very beginning, they're just short and sweet.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of crazy, it's my first time being on a plane and I got to, I got to see some pretty cool things that I never saw. I was very scared to get on the plane. But yeah, it was, it was a cool opportunity and just very thankful and thankful for the Innovation Zone grant that was written for us that paid for our flight, our hotel, our food. And we thank Ms. Barris for being very helpful and helping calm me down on the plane. But yeah, it was, it was a fun experience and we got to see a lot of things and opportunities that we could have here at Silver. And maybe just build a program for the future kids who want to join the CTE.
I kept freaking out on the plane, but I thought it was funny because it was his first time, but yeah. It's really it for me. So I get to my part.
So in Denver, the two, the two schools we went to, we got to go to the Innovation Center, which was, it's, it's an extension of the original high school. The original high school was Saint Vain, Brain High School. And it was, it was an awesome school, like, the program that they've built up there was incredible. Do you want to talk about some of the stuff they had there?
I was amazed when I first walked in there. I seen, they were talking about airplanes and stuff and I was like, you know, maybe it's gonna be a small little RC plane. No, they're, they're building real planes that they can fly later on in life. For the, each year they just build on and they have this little book that they just, every year they just complete a new stage of it. I thought that was awesome because like, I've always wanted to try something like that. And then even more with their programs, like how they, they're raising their own frogs and stuff for dissection later on, it's pretty cool.
What?
Oh, forgot about that.
Yeah, their pathways were really cool, I mean, like we went to their lab they had, their biology lab, and it looked amazing. And you could see the, like, studio area, it all looked like very professional, you could tell that they were trying to imitate like, a real studio for like, the news or something like that. And it was just amazing, I, I loved the school there.
The second place we visited is the At- Atmos Institute at Colorado University. And that was, that was pretty mind blowing, we saw some cool robotic stuff like the robot dog. And we got to test out some, I forget the teacher's name, but yeah, just test out the VR thing you had going on. And it was really just a cool experience and we got to experience things that, you know, maybe we might not have in our high school career, but we could, um, maybe bring it to the school system for kids later on and just build up a good program. And, you know, we really just want to get the community involved. Couple of things we learned is that we don't have a very big community outreach in our program, is that we're kind of just school based and that, um, yeah, something big I took away from it was that we gotta get out to the community more and we gotta get them involved in what we do.
Yeah, so besides all the fun and, and everything that was happening, we, we got to see what programs that they had and how we could build up our own programs. At the Innovation Center, the, one of the guys we talked to was a contact that Staley had. And he was talking to us about how he had built up, he was the one that built up the, the center. And what he said was, is the media, he, he started off small with just a media group and they built it up and they kind of advertised the community. And they were getting people more interested and they were kind of showing what they were doing there at the school and they got more funding and more grants. And they were able to build their own building where kids go, they go and work there and get paid for it and they get to do things they love and enjoy to do. So that's what we want to do here, so we've started to build up our own media program, we have the Silver Studios channel. And me and my, my friend Isaac are running our own podcast and we're doing school news and, and kind of what's, what's going on here at the school and, you know, just everything. We're trying to build up what we have and we're trying to get more podcasts running and more like hype videos for, for sports and other things going. And I, I believe and I think that media is the key to getting us out there and getting the community to see what we're doing here at the school. And believe that, hey, like, they're doing something good and I want to help with that or I want to support that. And it's, it's amazing what we can do and that we are going to do. Thank you guys for coming and thank you, Ms. Barris.
Anytime, anytime.
If there were some questions, can I ask you guys?
I told you about the quiz that was coming.
Miss Barry is wanting to be off the hook. That was a phenomenal presentation, thank you for coming back and telling us about what you want to do. Ms. Barris has been telling us that she hasn't told us like that, so, great job, great job. My first question would be, what do you guys see, of the, of all the things that you saw, like you said, you already started on the media, but what do you think would be the most applicable to Silver High where we are?
Maybe helping out with, you know, we live in a lot of mountainous areas, maybe helping out with our Forest Service or Police Department, game and fish. One of the, one of the groups at the Innovation Center that we visited, they built drones for the, like, the wildlife and they helped them, you know, with the drones. And we can help out the Forest Service or Police Department, game and fish, you know, and we could just play a big part of the community.
Any other questions for the board?
Did you guys produce the hype videos for the football team and showcasing the football field and, and all before the, the games?
We, we did not, that was the group above us that had gone down, so it's not good.
More to come, hey, send us the link to your podcast. At least we'll get it out to us in our email so we can follow along. And if you want any guests for your podcast, I'm sure.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it.
Cool, we would love to join. I don't think we have any more questions from the board, thank you guys, so awesome, we're still glad you guys took over and just keep us in the loop.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Associate Superintendent Stephanie Barris with recognition of the Common Food for Sustainability.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, faculty. Well done, gentlemen, thank you. I would like to recognize the Commons. This year we had a unique opportunity to feed families, we fed almost a thousand families over three breaks. We took the breaks that were at least a week long, we wanted to make sure that our families in need had some food for them, for that week long break because we weren't serving lunches. We could not have done this without the Commons, the Commons donated time, they donated food, they donated the boxes. Anything that we asked for, they stepped right up and did that for us, so I would like to recognize the Commons and specifically Jay and Jeff, if you guys could come down. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's for me.
So, and our CTE innovative students, they actually made that.
Did they really?
Yes, they did.
Oh, that's even more meaningful, that's really great.
I feel the same way.
Well, thank you so much, thank you very much. Thank you. It is a wonderful organization and we're thrilled to partner with you, you've been a great partner. Food justice is a very important thing and there's a lot of people in the community that are hurting, inflation is how, is affecting, the SNAP changes are affecting, so we are, the Commons are trying to address hunger in a variety of different ways, this is one of them, so together we can hopefully make a difference, but thank you very much and thank you for this, this is very meaningful to us, so thank you so much. Do I get a ten thousand dollar check too? I just give it to the Congress.
Okay, next item on our agenda is CBA, I'm presenting for them is President Diane, Diane Carrick.
Thank you, I'm sorry, you got a sting?
No, nothing. Madam President and board members, good to see you guys. I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you've done before COVID, during COVID, for the introduction of schools back in, after COVID. It's a hard job and I appreciate all you've done. We're hoping to settle up on some bargaining issues soon. It's been a long year coming, maybe we can get some new language into the CBA. It's all gonna be good. I just want to thank you guys for everything you do for, for education, for students, and for employees. Thank you so much.
All right, next item on our agenda is information to the board, the item A, Superintendent, with the Army School Security Guard Survey Results, as well as high school bills, Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and so I will present you the information that is in your packet. I apologize for those who aren't able to see it, not sure, are you equipped with it or not? Probably not, okay. So the, the packet has one, two, three, four, five different documents, the first document, actually before I do that, let me first talk about the summary information. And you have that all there, which is the third PDF document. The third PDF document that you're going to see is the summary of the district-wide results, as well as those results being broken down by campus and by the groups, which include parents and community. And so we had a, a total of nine hundred and thirty-five survey respondents with, with regard to the question regarding the policy. We sent out this policy as an attachment on with survey questions. The questions included, do you feel that having non-security guard on a silver school campus would improve safety? How would you best describe who you are? Are you in favor of the policy? And do you have any, how would you best, okay, that's it. So of the nine hundred and thirty-five respondents, you had approximately eighty-nine percent of those who voted, voting in the affirmative for the policy, which is a total of eight hundred and twenty-seven individuals. And one hundred who voted not in favor of the policy. I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to look at how those respondents, at each respective group, voiced their opinions as well. Wanted to make sure that if they were, there were those who were not comfortable with having armed guard regarding the safety, whether it be more safe or less safe, they had a voice to share that as well. As you look through the report, you'll also see that the, it included all of the comments from the respective community members and parents. I won't read you all that for you, but I wanted to present that that's in the packet you have. Also, what you have in your packet. Okay, you also have the, the introductory to the policy that would go into the board policy, the board book, if the board chooses to take action. You also have the regulation policy in the legal draft, the first reading legal draft that includes all updates of information from our parent committees, as well as revisions from the state committee that began this long work back in October, November. You also have responses from Silver High School. So I also went over to the high school, came here, and I met with all of the students to give them an opportunity to share their thoughts as well. Freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors. Likewise, we saw a similar percentage from those students indicating what their thoughts were. Again, they in the ninety percentile as well for their thoughts regarding the policy. Once again, at the end of the day, it's really gonna come down to with the information, as well as the research information that was shared with the board, as well as your own research, to take the next step, as the board would like to proceed. The high school students were really engaging, I will tell you, visiting with them, they asked some pretty serious questions as well, just as our community members as well, and so I appreciate the attentiveness, I see that there's an assistant principal back here. The students were, were just at the top of their game, they were incredibly respectful and they asked incredibly insightful questions, just like our parents, so I appreciate that as well. Those are, that's the information that you have in front of you, and I'll stay up for any questions from the board.
Any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
President, Mr. Hopkins, one, another piece of this, a policy includes an MOU with Silver City, the town of Silver City, I believe, where are we in that process?
So we are about halfway through that process, it's still pretty early on. We will wait until after the board has made a final decision before moving forward. I know that Mr. Alvarez has had several meetings with the chief, likewise, I've met with the chief and the town manager regarding an MOU. Initially, I thought that we would need to, once a district made its final decision, go through the same process with the city, but I believe that the town manager will still be able to make that decision in, entering to an MOU with the schools.
Any other, any other questions for Mr. Hopkins? I have meeting Associate Superintendent Luis Alvarez with our personal report.
Madam President, members of the board, community, and colleagues. First, as you go ahead and look in your board book, you'll see our open vacancies. Of these vacancies, two of them have already been filled since, since it was printed, so you'll have to go there. Currently, we're at ninety-eight point six of capacity of being employed. I keep trying and, and we're gonna continue to work on it, but as we're getting closer towards the end of the year, we're getting more retired, retirees coming in and resignations, so we'll continue to go ahead and work on that. The additional positions that are allocated through the SEL grant, those are the ones that you'll see on there that are listed as new positions. This will be paid for and the money is allocated through the SEL grant. And we're currently have those posted and we're looking to go ahead and get those positions filled as well.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Alvarez? All right, negotiated twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four salary schedule, any turn up schedule?
Yes, ma'am, as you can see there, our salary increases went as a six percent, as Mrs. McCain said. We did a great negotiation with, with our union counterparts, they were very helpful. We did end up talking about the insurance and Michelle stole all my thunder, so thank you, Michelle. But we did for anybody that was making the sixty thousand, it was supposed to be a seven, sixty, forty split, and we were able to go ahead and move that through the help of our superintendent. We were able to go ahead and increase that five percent and the union was happy with that. Of course, they always want more, everybody wants more, but we were able to negotiate that and so we got that taken care of as far as our salaries. As far as our increment schedule, our increment schedule is what additional duties are. And so for our lunch duty, there were some irregularities as far as how we were paying and this was because there were two lunches back in the day. And so we were able to go ahead and rectify that, we brought, nobody lost money, everybody ended up keeping their money. But we brought some other pay for lunch duties and we made everybody equitable. And that goes for Cliff, that goes for the high school, and that goes for La Plata, so we're very happy about that. We were also able to go ahead and negotiate and work in the coaches' pay. We were able to go ahead and increase our Class A coaches. We were able to go ahead and increase our Class A coaches. They went up 595 dollars to their stipends, as well as our Class B coaches. They saw an additional 446 dollars. So not a lot, but when you start to look at how many positions, we're, we're trying to go ahead and do the best that we can to go ahead and address those needs.
Thank you, Alvarez. Any questions for Alvarez on negotiated 2023, 2024 salaries scheduled?
Okay, we also worked in conjunction with our athletic directors and the business office. So what we're looking at as we're talking about budget, budget is always a, a big theme, especially when you talk to Michelle. And what we ended up saying was, as we want to increase sports and we want to increase things, that pie doesn't get any bigger. I don't care what you try to do, the pie stays the same. And so what we wanted to do was to come up with a metrics as to how do we go ahead and put all of our money to drive what the students and, and, and the people want, what their participation. And so what we ended up doing was we ended up driving some metrics that as the number of student participations came up, that's where we ended up putting our money. As other sports or other clubs or organizations, they start to fall back in participation, that's what ends up happening as other sports get going, other clubs, other organizations. But that pie doesn't get any bigger. So what we wanted to do was say, how do we make it so that it's fair and equitable? When we have to say, we're going to start cutting back some funds here because this other group is growing and growing and growing. And so that's what we ended up doing with the phasing in or the removal of programs. We want to put our, our resources where they can best serve our students. And so that's why we came up with the participation numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Any questions?
This is, this is a copy of what we're talking about.
So just a quick question. So my understanding is we don't really get state level funding for the extracurriculars and sports and all of that, right? So that has to come out of our general.
Right. That all comes out of operation.
And so that's why you say the pie doesn't get bigger.
Doesn't get bigger. I mean, as we would like to go ahead and increase, I'll, I'll give you some examples. During COVID, we ended up increasing our, our participation by going with a power link. Kids came out of the woodworks for power link. It's a beautiful sport, a beautiful organization. And because there's all of those numbers, that justifies, hey, this is something that the kids are interested in. There's some other clubs and organizations that the numbers are dwindling. And so what we don't want to do is we don't want to cut people off in a short period of time. So what we're talking at, and that's what we drafted up with the, with the help of the athletic directors, as well as the business department. We worked together in conjunction to where we start to go ahead and look at, when you start to have several years of participation numbers that are dropping and, and coming down and coming down, we have to start looking at how are we going to continue to fund that? So we might start cutting back on the funding instead of paying for all of the, all of the travel, which includes food, lodging, and of course, vehicles, then maybe we start cutting back to where they have to fundraise for their own food that they're going to go ahead and consume. And if the numbers continue to drop down, then we might have to have them fundraise for, for their hotel stays. Because we only have so much money, but we want it to be a rule that everybody can follow. And so that's where we came up with our creation or deletion process over time.
I don't have a question, but thank the administration for taking a look at this because it's been static for a long, a long period of time. Having, um, something and writing on how we add and delete and change, I think is, is, is fresh to see and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. I, I think with all of the coaches and, and the athletic directors, I think they understand. And, and we understand there's going to be those years where the, where the participation isn't as great, but they have several years. And, and so, you know, there are going to be those years where kids want to go into another sport or they want to go into another organization, you know? You heard that coming from Mr. Thompson today, right? I'm, I'm sharing softball girls. I'm sharing. And so I, I appreciate all that they're doing. And we're trying to put that money for where the kids are interested.
Thank you, Alvarez. Looks like you've got one more for us.
That's the deletion piece. And then, yes, we can go to the discipline matrix.
So elementary and secondary, 2023, 2024, student athletic and discipline matrix.
Go back one more bit. So at the elementary, we came together with parents. And I just want to, first of all, as these groups came together to go ahead and look at our handbooks, I want to thank the parents that spent the time, the administration that spent the time. We went several, several meetings because as you know, discipline matrix, nobody's ever happy. There, there's always, well, what about this or what about that? And so we went back and forth quite a bit. And I know that that was a lot of time for our parents. So I truly, truly appreciate their participation in this. So what's the rationale for change when we're looking at the handbooks for next year? The rationale is we wanted to have parent input, right? We wanted parents that were coming to us and saying, how come my kid JB has a different consequence when my cousin over here at Harrison did the, did the same thing and, and it was different? And so what we wanted to do is we wanted to go ahead and get a baseline. In doing so, as we had these parent meetings, we ended up realizing that there's differences for our one through, one through three students as far as understanding what discipline is, understanding what, why they're receiving a consequence versus our four through six students. And so again, I, I'm truly thankful for all of the principals that they put in their time and their effort. And, and we came out with a discipline matrix that I think it showed a very, very good change where we're trying to go ahead and help the students to understand one through three, and then four through six, it ends up becoming progressive. So this is what I'm talking about. We're going to be doing more counseling, more warnings to establish an understanding of acceptable behaviors. A lot of times the kids don't understand that, you know, when you're stealing somebody's jacket or, or you're, or you're, you know, vandalizing their, their backpack, they're like, well, he, he made me mad, right? Well, we don't want to go ahead and have that same consequence that you would for a sixth grader. And so that's the reason why we broke it into two. And then from the fourth to sixth, the foundational understanding has already been established and the progressive discipline approach will be implemented. As the years go on, it's going to get better and better because the kids will know from first to third as they've been coached as to what's proper behavior. So here's just an example, and, and I didn't highlight anything because it's all new. So the whole entire thing is new, okay? But if you look on there, like as an example down there with a theft, so first offense, you know, you get a principal's warning, they're going to go ahead and counsel you, explain to you why. For a, for a fourth grader, sixth grader, they pretty much understand. So they're still going to get the, the counseling, but they're going to also get a consequence as well. And so as you look at the left-hand column, that would be our first to third grade. And then on the right hand will be our fourth through sixth grade. And as you can see, there, there's definitely that opportunity to go ahead and spend a little bit more time trying to get the kids to understand rational behavior. On the secondary discipline matrix, this one, we, we did a massive revamp last year. And so there are very, very few changes. One of the changes that we have for our secondary discipline matrix was clarification of terms. So we had expulsion that was written in, but I believe it was Mrs. Cruz that, that ended up bringing up saying, well, they think that they're automatically kicked out of school. And so we cleaned up that language. We changed it to expulsion hearing to reflect that there's a hearing, there's a process that we follow instead of just going through an expulsion. So we cleared up that language. This was something that I thought was absolutely amazing. You had the two secondary programs, the middle school and the high school, sharing ideas and talking about what's working, what's working at their school. And, and it's amazing to hear them talk because they say, hey, I loved how you had that stay away contract. That's something that we don't have at ours and how's that working? And so they ended up talking about how that stay away contract worked. So the middle school says, well, we're going to implement that. Is that okay? I said, that's great because now again, we're being consistent both at the middle school as well as the high school. Then the cell phone policy, the high school was saying, hey, we like your guy's cell phone policy. And, and how is that working over there? And, and so they kind of did, they both took a, a page out of the book that works for them and they ended up putting them in both of them. And so now there's going to be that level of consistency. So kids will be able to go ahead and have that understanding already at the middle school and it will carry through at the high school level. Then we also had a young lady, Stephanie, can you help me with the last name, last?
No.
You remember?
I needed a precursor.
I'm trying to remember the lady's name. She came down and talked to us about the tobacco program, which was awesome. It was a 24, uh, 24/7 tobacco program. We listened to, to her. She did a really good presentation. And we're running into a lot of problems, I'm going to be very honest, with vape pens. And so we ended up making some changes at the secondary discipline matrix for the vape pens. The nice thing is that there is a, if you could go to the next step, there is a, in there, you can see here on the discipline matrix, you can see where the hearings, we ended up adding those in there on the electronic devices. This is the high school's discipline matrix. You can see where they changed and they ended up with not in what the, the middle school was doing at the high school level. So that was awesome. And this one is at the middle school. And you can see up there where they put in the stay away contract, as well as the possession for tobacco and drug paraphernalia. The big thing that I need to go ahead and, and make sure that people understand, when we, when we first initialize it in our investigation process, when we look at these items, if they're straight tobacco, that's where there is a sealed container. You cannot manipulate it in any way, shape, or form. That's when we end up going to the tobacco. Where it's possible to become a drug paraphernalia on these vape pens, they can put in THC cartridges. And so the principals, we shared a, a good talk about how we were going to address those issues. So what might start out looking like tobacco actually ends up being a, a drug issue. And so we, we put that in there as well as the sensation program for the tobacco use. So they'll also get some counseling that'll come along with the tobacco use because of, they're so, they're so prevalent, the vape, the vape pens that are, that are coming out now, they're, they're, they are geared towards kids. You know, they come in all kinds of flavors and the kids are getting hooked on them really, really bad. And I want to give a shout out to Ben. Him and his crew have done a great job of putting in the vape detectors. We ended up getting money that was awarded to us from being in that class action lawsuit. And he's been busting his butt. I know they've been putting in those vape detectors. And so it's been very, very helpful to help us. What's, what's taking place. This one is probably one of the things that I'm most proud and happy of. The changes will be dates and names. All the policies will remain in effect. We completed a major overhaul last year. If you remember last year, we cleaned up a lot of language that was in there. And in talking to our athletic directors and principals and parents, everybody said that the handbook was agreeable. There wasn't anything that they felt was, hey, this is a huge problem. This needs to be addressed. Everybody was agreeable with it, with reasonable expectations. Of course, there were a few things, but they, they all agreed, well, it's all doable. And so the only thing that will end up changing our athletic and activity handbook for next year will be dates and names. And that's about it.
Were we saying that so they can't have one app anymore?
And that, that's going to be, we're following what the NMAA is.
Okay.
And so that is a, that is a change. Yes, but that's not, at our level, that's a NMAA.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Alvarez, and as he talks about the athletic handbooks as well as the student handbooks, I just want to reiterate that any and all legislative changes that are presented to us at the law conference that require us to make a change, we'll make those adjustments as well. These are changes that are arbitrarily done at the district level based on principals and parent meetings. But any legal requirements that we have to update, we will make sure to include those.
We have some questions for you, Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
I really don't have much of a question. I just wanted to make a quick statement. I think, you know, we looked long and hard at a lot of the handbooks and just made, can you see? And I think it was really just a ton of time on behalf of our administrators. But the one thing that we've realized in going through detail and letter by letter is that really none of that works unless we have competent administrators. And so I just want to say thank you to our principals and administrators who have been consistently working to enforce it and really know what it actually says. Because it doesn't matter what the handbooks or the activity books or the discipline matrix says unless it's actually applied consistently and enforced. So I just want to say thank you very, very much.
I, I would like to reiterate that as well. The discipline matrix is a guideline. There's always going to be extenuating circumstances, but it gives us that opportunity to measure where we're at because there's always, there's always different things that end up happening. But they're doing a great job and, and the parents too. I got to give my hat off to the parents that sat in our, our programs because they were long, I could see Mrs. Evans going, yeah, they were long meetings. But it, it was, it was very fruitful and, and it, it did really, really well. So thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for all your work on that question on the activity in the athletic handbook on academic eligibility. Prior to COVID, was the grade checks done every nine weeks or was it semester?
They've changed that to semester and it made that semester.
But prior to COVID, it was nine weeks?
It was every nine weeks.
But it was the, the NMAA school.
And it depended on your, on your school. If you were on a six-week grading period, they said at your grading period. So it used to be, if you were at a six-week grading period, it'd be six weeks. Or if you were on a nine-week, it'd be nine weeks. And then the state moved to semesters. So semesters make the analogy. That's correct.
Thank you.
And then I just have a very broad one that I just kind of, you know, students are changing, right? They're very different. And so I just wondered if we took into account if ISS is still a deterrent, is OSS still a deterrent? Um, because a lot of kids during COVID, they're like, oh, I'd just rather stay home. Um, and so I guess that's kind of something that maybe you guys already thought of, or maybe we need to think of going forward. Is, it's my understanding if you get suspended, you can still do all of your homework. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's like you get a day off, but you can still do your work?
That's correct.
And I, I, it's not a fix right now, but it's something that we need to keep in mind as we're coming up with, you know, you guys have come up with other things that you're doing in the school. And I'm sorry that you have to do so much discipline in the school and that you're not reinforced from, from the parents at home. But I just feel like our students are changing. And so we need to make sure that the consequences that we are trying to enforce are actually deterrents, right? That's serving the purpose of why we have them there. Because otherwise, it's just busy work for you guys to bring them in and tell, guess what, you get to stay home for five days, but you can still do all of your homework. You can still come in and be a straight A student. And it just, for some, it just doesn't feel like it, like we're accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish. And so there's no fix right now. But I would say as you go into this next year, keep that in your forefront of, is there something else that we could actually implement in our discipline matrix that would be more effective than ISS or OSS? Right? Because ISS is babysitting and OSS is some days off of school, you can still do your homework. So I think we can do it. I think we've got wonderful, great brains out there that are constantly thinking of ways to improve the system. And so I, I, sorry, you guys are our star attendees. I said, we need to have a, we need to have an award for the administrators that attended the most school board meetings. But get with your, you know, get with your cohort. And I'm going to challenge Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Alvarez to do the same thing. Over this next year, if we see something else, I don't think that ISS and OSS is really effective as it used to be. When I was in school, I was scared to death, right? And it's just not the same. So that's all I have, just a comment.
Okay.
Sorry. Anything else? Okay, I'll stop talking. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you.
Item C. Associate Superintendent Cindy Harris with our enrollment updates.
Excuse me again, Madam President, members of the board, cabinet, colleagues, guests, people participating by internet. I do have something great to say. Our enrollment went up by one. I know, right? Hey, one is a start. Let's just go up from there. But as I tried to analyze it, there are no trends. You know, so we, we gain here, we lose there, we gain here, we lose there. But we are up by one, so I'm going to take it. Typically, towards the end of the year, you're not up by one. So I, I feel really good about that. Do you have any questions about enrollment? No, ma'am, I'd like to make it quick, please.
Next item you have for us is history adoption update.
So the history adoption materials update. And the reason why I call it the materials update is remember curriculum is actually the standards we teach. update is, remember, curriculum is actually the standards we teach. The books are just that, they're materials, they're books, and it was history adoption this year, and so many, all of our high school history teachers actually participated in some way, shape, or form typically. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Wilson brought the information back, Mr. Garnett at CLIP, and they did a really good job, because remember we talked about how confusing it was, and how we have these materials that don't really cover the New Mexico history portion, which is why typically I come to you with, hey, here's what it's gonna cost. We don't actually know quite yet, because we have to pull in a lot of different pieces. So when we take a look at the voting process, what we did was, the teachers went out, talked to their sites, they did, they did somewhat of a pilot, and so when I say somewhat of a pilot, there was a difficulty in some of the publishers in getting the information to us, and that's kind of part of the adoption process. And what we talk about going in with, with those, with the teachers in the group is, each publisher is different, and you have to know that going in, but if you say, these materials are really what I want to teach with, and I'm okay to wait for them, that's okay, if that's what you wanna do. So we try to be pretty transparent about what that looks like going in. Some grade levels were okay with that, and some grade levels were not. But what we do have is of the teacher choice, the two programs that went forward were Savis and McGraw-Hill. Savis in K nine through twelve, and McGraw-Hill in one through six. They're just material. So we did have an open house, we did have a parent show up, super excited about that, that's about the same, I've had one parent show up every year, but this parent, after having conversation and looking at the materials, you know, decided not to take a vote, because she had the utmost confidence in our high school teachers, that they would do what they needed to do to cover the curriculum, and as you can see, they do. And so, it kinda is what it is. So we're still waiting on a couple of different processes, but the one thing I did wanna say is, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Wilson came in and they discussed J-Store. J-Store is a site to get primary documents, primary materials, articles, and things of that nature. Because we do not have materials for New Mexico history that are up to date, that's what they asked, and we took that ask all the way down to third grade, so teachers can go in. Now, the difficulty is, it is written for the higher level, but teachers can use that as a resource to pull primary documents and then work from there. So we're looking at that as well, and that goes in part of the instructional materials that Michelle has. I can tell you right now, I'm still waiting on, you know, a couple of different publishers, and we're already up to three hundred and fifty thousand. So we only have four seventeen in there, which has to incorporate field critical materials as well. So just keep that in the back of your mind. You know me and my quotes, if we teach today's students as we taught yesterday's, we rob them up tomorrow, that leans in kinda on the comment that President Montenegro was saying is, is our kids are learning a little, a little bit different, and I had to do, to participate in the podcast for the gentleman, and they asked me about Chat GPT. And so we had that conversation, it was very interesting. We didn't have that when I was a kid, I had Encyclopedia Britannica, and so we talked about that. So we cannot teach the kids like we did when we were using Encyclopedia Britannica, they have so much information at their fingertips right now, and the critical thinking process is what we're looking at. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Alvarez?
Are you sure, Dr. Williams? Okay. It changes things, doesn't it, when I say it that way?
Alright, is the Carl Perkins grant for us?
I do, and what I did, because I know you're excited about it, is I combined the last three into one presentation. So, CTE Carl Perkins, the next gen in innovation zone. So when we take a look at that, one of the most important questions any school or teacher can ask is simple, how can we be more thoughtful about what we do? And I hope you saw that in the students. That's what we were talking about. We had the opportunity to go look at some great buildings, I can say that. The conversations the gentleman and I were having were, I can't build you a thirty-three million dollar building, I can't. I want to, but I can't. But what we can do is provide our upcoming students with the experience. Forget the building, that's just lipstick, forget the building, talk about the experience. And so when they were there, it was enlightening to see them say, we can do that, we can do that better, and the best one, we're already doing that better. And that was a comment made about a program that we were doing, and a colleague was doing. And so they asked, you know, have you heard of this program and this program? The guys were looking at each other, and they're like, we've been using that for three years. So that was a great, great.